To the Board of Education meeting on July 8th, we have five board members present this evening. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll move.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes five oh. Moving on to the consent agenda. Dr. Cobb, anything you want to point out to us? It's pretty long.
There's a lot of stuff there for organizational purposes, but other than that, it's pretty cut and dry.
I make a motion we approve. The consent agenda is presented.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes five oh. We do not have any comments from the public this evening, so we will move on to reports and presentations, setting the time, dates, and places of regular board meetings. Dr. Cobb?
This should go pretty simply. For a number of years, our board has operated on a second and fourth Monday of every month. The proposal would be that we continue to have our board meetings on the second and fourth Monday of every month, with the exception of any of those that fall on nationally recognized holidays.
Arbor Day.
What?
Flag Day, Arbor Day, Flag Day.
Yeah. But yes, every second and fourth Monday of the month, we would have a scheduled board meeting. Seven o'clock.
Okay, we do need to take action on this tonight?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Madam President, I move that we adopt Resolution 38.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes five oh. Thank you, Dr. Cobb. Do we have any board reports this evening? Okay.
None.
All right. We will move on to Section 6.01, Purchase of IMAC Computers. Mr. Brill?
Keep this pace up. We have a need for 37 brand-new IMACs. The ones that we have currently, these we're replacing, are seven, eight, nine years old. They're before I was here. It's time for them to go. We had a choice between two models. We're kind of between model years, and this is the latest and greatest they have. We talked with a few of our other schools. They said this is what you want, to be future-proofed. This is going to fill Lynch's lab and Fisher's lab with brand-new Macs, and then a desktop for Lynch as well. They are a sole-source provider. We buy from Apple directly. There is a Kansas State contract. They didn't reference it, but we can if we need to. The price doesn't change. Any questions or concerns? I like this pace.
I don't like Apple.
I love Apple.
You know. I'm not going to say anything.
Are we approving this tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Please.
Okay. Then I make a motion to approve the purchase of, is it IMAC? For that price down there at $46,213.
Second, for that price down there.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes five oh.
And that could have been like 200 Chromebooks, too.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dean. All right, moving on to Neosho County Community College Agreement.
Okay, so this is a memorandum of understanding that works concurrently with our C-3 initiative. So, the purpose of this understanding is for students who choose to take courses through Neosho County while enrolled at Ottawa High School, that do not fall under the dual-credit concept. Either they have to go to Neosho County to take the class, or Neosho County doesn't offer that class through the high school in the manner that we have agreed to with C-3. So typically, when those things happen, they pay the full rate of tuition, which is $100 and some odd dollars a credit hour. This memorandum of understanding would put us on pace with all of the other schools that pay the lesser rate of, I think, $75 a credit hour for all of those courses not captured under the C-3 umbrella. So this is really coming about because we have a student this year who is looking at becoming our first to be the dual-graduate, and needs to take some extra courses to do so. And we're going to try to help her the best we can to do so without a huge deficit in terms of tuition costs. So other than that, this doesn't impact our district in any other way, other than any student that wants to enroll in a class at Neosho County while enrolled at Ottawa High School will be able to do so at $75 a credit hour if it is not a C-3 umbrella class.
Does this MOU cover the C-Tech aspects of what Neosho County does?
Those are covered under a different Senate bill, and are currently free courses to everyone, so that they don't have to worry about tuition for those courses. They're covered under law now.
Okay.
So this would only be like if you wanted to take...
Some nursing class, or...
Taking Kim 1.
She wants to take Kim 1 and Kim 2, and they're not in our C-3 initiative.
Yep.
Okay.
Cool.
One of the questions I did have, and the road to you-know-where is paved with good intentions, and I didn't get this sent to you earlier, I'm sorry. The flat rate of 75 per hour plus special course fees, one of the things that's frequently thrown in is activity fees.
Yep.
And would that still be applicable?
It's applicable to Neosho County for whatever fees they want to create. They do the same thing through career and technical education classes, and it's it is not something that we have the power or control of with Neosho County. If we don't sign it, they're going to wind up paying an additional cost to enroll in the course anyways. The course fees are then going to be added on top of that. The same thing happens to students with welding. When the old Senate Bill 155 existed, then it would cover the cost of tuition, but not the cost of any of the applicable fees. And there was still basically a $1,600 bill that was going on with those courses, even though tuition was covered. So yes, I'm sure that there will be fees applicable to her, and anybody else that would choose to enroll in these types of courses, but those fees are less heinous when you consider that you no longer have to pay the full tuition cost to enroll in those courses.
Any other questions? We do need to take action on this. Is there a motion to approve the MOU with NCCC?
Madam President, I move that we approve...
Oh.
I'm sorry. Madam President, I move that we approve the MOU at Neosho Community College.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes five oh. Okay, moving down. Dr. Cobb is going to discuss the second reading of OMS and elementary student handbooks, and OMS Athletic Handbook.
You've had multiple weeks to look over middle school and elementary handbooks. There are not significant changes there to anything. This would just be the final approval for them to go into either digital print or print.
Any questions or discussion?
Madam President, I move that we approve the OMS and elementary student handbooks, as well as the OMS Athletic Handbook.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes five oh. Presentation of Handbook, Section 6.04.
Dean, if you would pull up the Personnel Handbook changes that are there. The one that says Personnel Handbook, Personnel Changes. That one right there. Okay, so this encompasses all of the Personnel Handbooks that we had would be licensed, classified, and substitute handbook changes. You can see the biggest one that comes into place is that we've changed the policies to match that we would continue to have Martin Luther King Jr. as a holiday, as a paid holiday for our staff, which I think is beneficial for everyone. And also covers the snow day issue that we saw this year. So when we started the snow day, the 1, 3, and 5 paid snow day, it was intended solely for 9- and 10-month classified staff. Those whose schedules and salaries were going to be impacted drastically by not having school. Our 12-month classified staff are given extra days. They have sick leave that is different. They have vacation and other leave that is different. They have the opportunity to do some things, and some of them are required to be here anyways. So our custodial and maintenance staff are required to be here on snow days because their job at that point in time is to make sure that our buildings are safe for students to return, hopefully the following day. So it didn't impact them anyways, and ultimately, what we saw is some of our 12-month classified staff that should have been able to get to work and do some things, being paid for a day when we just didn't necessarily need them to be paid for that day. So they have the ability to take that day off if they choose to. If not, specifically, this office would remain open and do the things that we need to do to ensure that our kids are ready to come back to school the following day. But it does leave our 9- and 10-month classified staff there, being paid on first, third, and fifth days, which is really a positive thing for them, given the situation they're in from a salary standpoint, and how snow days impact their schedule. Other than that, there is not a lot there. You see a lot of changes in the substitute handbook, but that is solely because it hasn't been updated in about four years. Changes in salary, those types of things that were applicable there. Other than that, those handbooks are pretty nominal in terms of the changes. Any questions for those staffing handbooks? Okay, at that point, Mrs. Whitaker is going to come talk about high school handbooks.
Good evening. A lot of the changes that you see, a big part of what we did is we looked at the OMS handbook, and we really tried to align the OHS and OHS handbook more, especially in the discipline charts. Our discipline charts were different, and we had some mandatory suspension days, I think, seven points, 12 points, and 20 points. And so we have taken those mandatory suspension days off. And really, what we want to say is at 20 points, a student could be recommended for an expulsion hearing, but that doesn't mean we're going to ultimately do that every single time if it's not appropriate for that student, for whatever the reason. So a lot of the changes are, again, just to align with OMS. The other thing that's a big change for next year is our tardy policy. That was actually put together by Mr. Hag and a group of our teachers. They sat down the last several months of school. They talked about it, and they kind of came up with a new plan for our tardies. And so we're going to give it a shot and see what happens. Another change is in our attendance improvement plan. We did not do a good job this year of meeting with families and trying to intervene before we got to truancy. And so there's going to be some new things that we want to try in the office as far as getting families in and actually collaborating with them with meetings, and trying to be more proactive with student attendance, rather than just waiting for them to get that dreaded letter. And then it kind of has an angst feel to that relationship between you and the family. We want to try to avoid some of that. The other thing you'll see is our Cyclone Hour, our new bell schedules are listed. One big change, too, we're going to do a little give-and-take with our students. The kids came to myself, and they wanted to try to wear hats next year and take that out of our dress code. They saw that at one of the schools that we visited. I took a group of kids to check out a Cyclone Hour. And so what we talked about as a staff and through our BLTR, Building Leadership Team, is we're going to do a little give-or-take. We're going to go ahead and see what it looks like to let students wear baseball caps and stocking hats, and we are going to tighten up on our cell phone policy. And when I say that, it was in the handbook anyways. And we're going to try to do a better job of being upfront with the students, communicating that, and enforcing that more, and doing a little give-or-take. The other place that we made pretty significant changes in our plagiarism and cheating. We try to take a more proactive coaching approach. There's a reason that kids cheat a lot of times. It's because they're stressed out, and so we want to make sure we're holding them accountable. But we also want to make sure that we're coaching, and again, collaborating with the family and the student through that process. So you'll see there are still some consequences. There's an opportunity for the student to still show their learning, because we think that's important, especially as we start talking about standard-based grading and kind of looking at what our grades really mean at the high school. And so those are the kind of, I wanted to highlight those major changes, and then just see if anyone had any questions.
I like the hat thing, because I love wearing hats, so...
Okay. The kids are really excited.
I bet.
The students are extremely thrilled about it. And what the principal at the other school said is obviously, the first couple of months, everybody wears hats. And then she said it died down, and now you'll have the same 10 kids we tell every day to take their hats off, are the 10 kids that wear the hats, and they're going to go right into the shop and do the things that they like to do.
And allow the athletics department also to wear their ball caps on game days and throughout the week.
Yeah, absolutely.
The truly sad part about the hat policy is that you probably see, over the course of the year, probably 100 officer frills based upon a hat situation, whether it's wearing your hoodie, whether it's a hat, a stocking cap, and somebody asking them to take it off, and it becoming a more confrontational situation, or just simply a, "I'm not going to do what you tell me to do."
Now, I guess my question would be pertaining to hoodies. Okay, I know some kids wear oversized sweatshirts, so their hoods come down clear over their face.
Yep.
Are you still discouraging that?
Yeah, we're going to talk to the kids about that at the beginning of the year, and we are going to discourage it, and the angle, we're kind of taking on that as a safety angle, because with a hat and a stocking cap and those things, we can still see their profile in their face. If hiding in a hood, if someone, anybody could walk in our building and do that. So we're going to just be honest with the students and upfront about it, and talk about that situation. We've kind of, we were talking to the kids about it at the end of the year, and we polled them, and we polled the teachers. So they kind of anticipated this was coming, and we kind of pretty much told them we probably wouldn't be okay with hoodies, and most of the kids were all right with it. And I think as long as they have the option to wear something, I think it would even deter the kids from wearing hoodies.
How about cowboy hats? Are you going to allow cowboy hats?
That is a really good question. I don't know that we thought about that, Harold, but I, yeah. I think, I would say this, I wouldn't see why we wouldn't, and that, to me, would not classify. We're going to talk to the kids and define kind of what are decorative hats versus what are like a normal hat that somebody would wear just out and about, or like in a certain profession or career. So yeah, that's a good, thank you for saying that.
So no fascinators?
Correct. Yes, correct. Yes.
Nothing profane or derogatory in the hat?
Yes, correct. And that's all listed still in the dress code. And we really aligned our dress code with OMS, because our dress code was wildly different than theirs. And that's hard for kids, right? When they leave the middle school and they come over to us, and all of a sudden, we're adding like all of these rules that they didn't necessarily have to follow at the middle school. So we really want to try to remain more consistent, so kids have less confusion during that already awful transition between eighth grade and ninth grade for a lot of kids, so...
Any questions over high school handbooks? Athletic handbook was very minimal in any changes. The only thing there was eligibility.
Yes, that's in our other handbook.
And I think we covered this in the update, but just in case you have any questions. The eligibility policy, in essence, what it is saying now is that there's a two-week span of ineligible. But within that two-week span, you have the opportunity to remove yourself from the list. So if on Monday, I am ineligible, and I say, "Oh, my God, I got a game tomorrow. I got to get this figured out," and I get to my teachers, and I do the things that I need to do, and at the end of the day, on Monday, they say, "Yep, you're good to go," then we would reinstate eligibility for that student, so that it's not a, you're an entire week off, nor is it a, "This week is your warning week, next week is your yellow week, and then the third week is this week, and now we reset and we come back." It is a much simpler notion, still holding students accountable to achieving the success they need to in order to participate in activities at OHS.
Does doing that teach them the responsibility of getting their work done on time?
I've seen this done at a school. Brad was actually looking at this, and he kind of came to me with the idea. And I have seen this done at a school, and honestly, it does. The other thing is it puts a bigger sense of urgency with the student, because rather than knowing I'm done for two weeks, so who cares, right? I'm just going to get further behind, or I'm going to let my work sit and kind of wait to the end. The students have a little bit of control, and they learn that if I go in class and I take care of what I need to take care of, or if I just didn't do well on a test, if I go and get that test made up with my teacher, then I have a chance of participating quicker, rather than just sitting out for that two weeks, because that's what the other policy had kind of told students they had to do.
The other part of that is that our intent with all of this is really about improving the learning process, and showing us that you have the ability to learn, and that you've done the things to show us that you have learned something. In the old eligibility policy, once you were ineligible, you might as well kiss it goodbye, because none of those things mattered anymore. All right, so this one gives students the opportunity. There are also very few things, and we have this conversation a lot with our staff when they bring up responsibility. One, I would tell you that nowhere in the state standards does responsibility exist. It is not a standard that we have to teach. It is something that is expected of our teaching. It doesn't exist as a standard. The next piece of that is that there are very few times in our lives when hard and stringent deadlines are the result of the way that we have to live our lives. And most of what we do from an educational standpoint, if we miss a deadline, we're going to get a call from KSDE or KASB and say, "Hey, we don't have this yet. You got to send it to us." And we still have the opportunity to get it done without repercussion. And so part of that is recognizing that really only in the school world is there so stringent of an effect that says, "If you didn't do this on time, sorry, you don't have the opportunity to learn anymore." Really, it's only in the school world that that exists. Everything else is, if we miss this day, we're going to find some way to either catch up or make sure that we accomplish our task to be where we're supposed to be in the end result. So maybe a different platform for us to start moving, holding students more accountable to their learning versus accountable to a grade.
Sure. I mean, if they don't get it done, they're not going to play.
Absolutely. Yep. And hopefully, trying to be more proactive in coaching them to actually care about their learning. And that's a lot of the premises, even with all of our changes in our handbook. Just trying to engage the kids more, and helping them understand why that learning is invaluable, and why that learning is important, rather than just slapping consequences down without that coaching and that collaboration, and that us helping them learn the value of that activity.
Any other questions from Mrs. Whitaker? Thank you.
Robinson used to talk about lots of handbooks.
Yeah, you've got the sped one. Let's start there. And I hopefully highlighted things where you can flip through it and kind of see the bigger changes. A lot of it was just updating dates and names and things like that. But I'll highlight a few things. One, the core beliefs is something our admin team has been working on with TASN as to how we're going to make decisions as far as they're related to intervention. So rather than staying with the philosophical statement that's been there, I don't know how long it's been there. Nobody in our sped department could track back to when it was developed. It's important to me that our sped department is in alignment as much as we can with the work that's being done in our district. So that's why that change is there. The other, the second page, the flow chart, we've had a version of this, but it was outdated. The state has made some small changes to their special ed process. And again, this is a process that we need to follow. We're required to follow. A lot of it's in state and federal law. And so just making sure we're staying with what the state is recommending. Flipping on down to the private schools piece. When we first opened our preschools, a lot of the push was to require all students who are receiving special education services to come into our preschool to receive those services, which at the time ensured that we had the numbers we needed to run our preschools. Right now, we're in the opposite boat, that we're going to start the year with a waiting list. And so there are kids who are speech-only, one service only, that we've... Lexie Downe has done a great job of going into the community and providing those services. Has helped us rebuild some relationships with some of our private preschools. So whenever possible, we want to be able to provide those single services in the setting where the kid is. If there's more intensive need, we're still, as they go through our screening process, still recommending that they come into our preschool, because of the things that we can provide when our different services can work together. But some of our kids who are one single service, what we were finding out is some of our preschools weren't referring kids at all. They were holding them because of their own financial livelihood. And so hopefully, this will ensure that kids are getting the services they need early, and also help us in not overloading our preschools with kids who are already in good preschool placements. The next piece is all about Engage. Last year, when we added elementary students, I presented to the board and brought an updated placement procedure and forms and all of that. The next couple pages of changes are all of those things. I didn't make any additional changes, but it hadn't been put into this handbook. And at the time, I don't think we asked the board to approve it in any way, shape, or form. It was more just a presentation of information of, here's what's to come. After using it for a semester with a number of situations, the process we put in place worked. Will work better this year, when we've got a full year to be able to do it. Several of those students, we were kind of rushing the process because of where their situation was in not being able to start Engage in August and starting it in January. And then the last, last two things, I guess. There used to be, at the very end of this handbook, there used to be a section on ESI, Parent Information Component. It was like the last 20 pages of it. I've actually pulled that out, and it's a separate document, and you don't need to pull it up, Dean. The, these, the information in this packet is something we're required to provide to any parent of a student that we seclude or restrain. It's also required to be on our website and on each individual school's website, which is something we heard again today. The problem with it was it was embedded in our sped handbook, and so it really needed to be its own separate document. It's really not a special ed issue. I think it ended up here more because special ed was the group that was doing seclusion and restraint training, and the most likely to use it, and we still will be. But pulling it out of this document and making it more accessible to everybody involved is both legally required for us, but I think also will help us in getting the word out to parents and to our staff as to, here's our processes, and here's what parents' rights are. So it's a separate document. The template that was there, 90% of it is provided by the state, because it's dispute resolution. It's all the things that the state outlines in regards to definitions for seclusion and restraint. The only piece that's specific to us is our policy, which you approved last year and will approve. I think the one I put in is actually the one recommended in tonight's policies. So as you review those, hopefully, if the board chooses to go a different direction with that policy, then we'll revise that document as well. The last change I would highlight out of the sped handbook is related to paras. One of the things that I've tried to do each year that I've been in this role is to make it easier for our paras to get their in-service hours. And I highlight this, any new para that we hire is required to get 20 in-service hours a year. After their third year, they go down to 10. Without that, we don't receive reimbursement for their position. Some of the things that we were able to do this year, we're going to provide Boys Town Training to all of our paras in their first two days on the job, but also providing some ongoing opportunities for them to work with special ed staff to review behavior plans, review changes in student behavior, what data's being collected, to work with teachers. Our paras that start with us at the beginning of the year will have their 20 hours in about the first three weeks of school, so we shouldn't have any issue there. And then we put some different procedures in place, more to make sure that those staff that we're getting throughout the year, that there's a clear process as to how we're going to help them get the training they need and meet the state's requirements at the same time. So the rest of the sped handbook stayed virtually the same. We took some things out, because again, we're going to try to go to more of a Google platform for tracking in-service hours and WebKids, which again, was a request from some of our paras. They're not real happy with WebKids, because they don't use it enough. And so accessing it, it's not the easiest system to manage. So any questions on the sped handbook? Or the ESI one, I guess, since I mentioned it in that process? All right, I'll keep going then. The other one that is here, the handbooks within this document have all been approved in years past individually. One of the things we've been talking with Ivy Briggs, who's coming on as the Director of our Alternative Programs at Eugene Field, is our vision in the future is that a lot of these programs start to blend, that there are kids who may be enrolled in OLC, but there may be times that they need the direct instruction that Engage could provide. And so down the road, our hope would be that we can start to find some consistency in what our alternative programs look like and what expectations look like. And yet, there are still some things that we need to be able to keep specific to those programs. So we haven't gotten that far in this year's document, but our hope was to get them all into one document, so we can hand it off to her, and for her, as she goes through the year working with staff, to start looking at commonalities and starting to blend those things. So I'll highlight just a couple of things that we've changed. As far as Engage is concerned, in years past, we've relied heavily on the high school handbook for our policies at Engage, in talking with Ivy, in talking with Mrs. Whitaker and Dr. Cobb. With elementary coming over there, it really makes that difficult. So instead, what we're going to do, we've outlined in the Engage part of the handbook, things that are specific to the Engage program. All other policies and procedures will go back to their grade-level-specific handbook. Does make it a little bit more complicated for Ivy, but in talking with her, I think it's still her choice to be able to do that, because you can get to things that are more age and developmentally appropriate. There's very few of those things that are going to come up on a regular basis. So a lot of the other policies that we've taken out are because they're already provided in their handbook. The other thing it keeps us from doing, and Cyclone connects a good example that had been in there for a while. I don't think it had been updated in this handbook for a couple of years. But as the high school makes a change to it, what we don't want to get is that we've got handbooks with different information that don't align. So this ensures that whatever the most updated information is at the high school and at the middle school, that we're referring back to that, instead of having a separate policy in our Alternative Program Handbook, unless it's something specific to that program. The other piece we added to the Engage handbook, there was a section already in here on out-of-instructional control, and about students potentially being sent home for the day and returning to the program. Last year, for the first time, we ran into a situation with a student... Last year, for the first time, we ran into a situation with a student that uh, behavior was still unsafe even in, in that setting. And there are a number of ways within the special education process that teams can work through those things, but because of the quick escalation, we needed to use the long-term suspension process to ensure the safety of staff and students. And we didn't feel like it was specified in there. So um, just adding a statement there to give Ivy and her staff that o- option if it's appropriate. Uh, we still feel like you're going to have kids attending a, a behavior program that are coming there for a reason and we want to, to give them every chance to improve, but we need that option um, on occasions. And it would still go through the regular hearing process as outlined in, in the other handbooks. Last couple of things I would mention, JDC's handbook that is in here is not one we've developed or, or written, it's actually developed by the Franklin County Detention Center. I think it was the first time most of us had, had really read through it. And I tried to note on there, I thought it was important that the board had it in their hands to review. Um, and I put a thing on the front of that section, just noting that it wasn't something we developed. Um, but I think it is something that we need to be able to access if parents have questions or as we talk about that being an option uh, for students that were able to communicate to parents, here are their expectations. Uh, as I read through it, most of them align with things we're already doing. There are obviously some things that they can do in, in regards to uh, what we would consider seclusion and restraint that go beyond what we're capable of doing and that's where I think it's important to specify that they have procedures at the detention center that are specific to the detention center. Um, but I wanted the board to have that as well. The last change I would mention is in regards to OLC and just as the high school mentioned, some flexibility in their discipline process. A lot of OLC's procedures uh, ultimately landed a kid out of school suspension. They've added into their handbook uh, the option of being able to, to end school suspend and do some different things that way to keep students making progress academically. We'll also add the OVLP handbook to this as well. Brenda tells me there's no changes to it. Um, but because of where she was and trying to send it to us, she wasn't able to, to get it submitted. So uh, we will get it submitted. If there are any changes, I'll ask the board to review it just as we are at the next meeting and approve at a meeting follow. But we're trying to get all of our alternative programs into one handbook, both to make your life easier and being able to approve one document, but I think ultimately it'll make our, our principals' lives a little bit easier too and being able to communicate to parents and know they've got one resource to navigate. Questions about any of that? Sorry, I feel like I'm talking really fast. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now for the fun of policy changes. So we will try to be as, as quick as possible on this. Though, there are a couple of things that I wanted you to notice, CGK and CM, those are a couple of things that, um, that we have worked under the construct of, but we've not had a policy identifying it. And ultimately what it states is that as the superintendent, I can place an administrator on leave um, until the board acts upon their continued employment uh, or their dismissal. Um, so even though we have worked under that construct, we, construct, we've not had a policy in place that would give uh, me or any other superintendent the authority to do so. Um, so we want to make sure that that policy was in place and hopefully one that we never have to use. Um, maybe the biggest one in all of this is you see um, some, some minor ones still up there. EBBE is a change in drills, uh, and it's actually four fire, two tornado and three safety. Um, not three fire and four safety, but um, that is a change from 16 different drills last year, uh, which was a, a lot. Um, the, the big policy there that we probably need to have some discussion about is the non-discrimination policy. Um, and this is a conversation that's taken place in this office for probably the last three or four years and when we actually approach our board about um, identifying um, sex as one of the protected classes within our discrimination policy. Um, and to this point, it has never been garnered by KASB in terms of, of developing the language and now it has been. So on the front of this, KASB will make a, a declaration that this is not necessarily a recommendation because there is no legality to the inclusion. Um, whatever her, whatever situation based upon sex is still not protected under law. Uh, but that doesn't mean that it shouldn't be protected within our district. Uh, and so ultimately, the, the Equal Employment Um, Opportunity Act is, is expanding this to include pregnancy, gender identity, or sexual orientation to be protected under our policies in the same way that race, uh, gender, um, and those other items that are, that are there protected um, in terms of our discrimination policies. So it is a little bit different. It is an inclusion to those things, um, but certainly I've embedded all of the, the um, language from KASB there as well, uh, so that you can get all sides of that. Um, the other major change would be one that came from KASB as a recommendation, which is GACCA. This is the nepotism policy that we talked about a little bit, um, that would indicate that um, if there are any family members residing or married to a member of the board, that they would not be eligible to, for employment within our district. Again, this would be something that we, and the reason that it's bolded here is this would be a recommendation for us not to implement as a policy coming from KASB. The rest of them are just kind of um, updates to current policies that we have. One that was removed because it was no longer in effect. Um, and they are um, pretty nondescript for the most part. Those, there were two major ones, the um, or three major ones. The, the one that gave superintendent the authority um, to suspend administrators, the one that is our non-discrimination policy and the addition of sex as a means of um, of protection. Uh, and then the one that we recommend that we not approve, which would be an, an increase to the nepotism policy that exists. The rest of them are all recommended for approval. Any questions about those policies? If you would look at the policy updates, yep, those. So as we went through the handbooks, there were some policies in our handbooks that did not match up with the policies that we have within board docs. And so we wanted to make sure that we identify those. Um, and so the first one was here in terms of paid holidays. We have, we have discussed within our handbooks that in order for, um, in order for a, a classified staff member to receive holiday pay, they had to work both the day preceding the holiday and the day after the holiday. That if they were to take an extended vacation period, then they would not be paid for that holiday pay, uh, because they were taking vacation or whatever during that time anyways. Um, so the handbook stated that our policy did not, so we update the policy to make sure that we see the inclusion of Martin Luther King Jr. Day there. Keep scrolling down, we get to the next ones. Um, we deleted some things in terms of uh, how we do vacation pay. If you keep scrolling down, keep going. We changed our retirement. So the retirement piece came directly out of a KASB policy. We put in USD 290's policy there. Um, and then the last one, I think if you keep scrolling down there, is um, just a change of wording and then a change of addresses. So not much there, but uh, we get to the point where we update our policies, right? Um, that one is ultimately about suspensions being outlined uh, within the handbook, how those things occur. Okay? So there are policy updates and then Cyclone Connect and maybe uh, Mr. Grell here can give us a quick rundown of changes he made to Cyclone Connect, which Mr. Robinson alluded to a little bit earlier here.
Um, I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but we have two separate one-to-one policies, one for the middle school, one for the high school. They are 99% the same and have a few small changes between the two. We have merged them. We've made them one document, uh, just kind of streamlined things and as Kelly alluded to, just make it easier for kids transitioning from the middle school to the high school to have the same expectations. Um, really, nothing has changed in here very much except for the summer month addition. We let students take them home over the summer. That wasn't in the handbook before. Middle school and high school take them home now. Um, additionally, Mrs. Wilson was identified as someone to speak with. We just took any identification of a person out just so we can always be ready to go for each year. Um, we added penalty boxes. We've been using penalty boxes in all schools, but it's never been in our handbook. So we kind of fleshed out a policy this last part of the semester, um, and then gave our admins the ability to put students in these penalty boxes and there's four levels of access and they're listed there as how they work. Uh, we removed their ability to personalize their Chromebook. We did initially say they could purchase their own commercially-produced case, but now we provide a snap-on case this year that stays on the Chromebook at all times. It's not a bag anymore, it's actually a snap-on shell, um, that will re- remain on the Chromebook at all times. Um, we do not turn in Chromebooks at the end of the year unless they are leaving the middle school or leaving the high school. So we took that out of there as well. And we added the Sprint 1 Million Project in just so people were more aware of the program and how it works. Any questions or concerns?
I don't think so. Thank you, Dean.
Alrighty, so that's a whole lot of policies. Any questions, comments about the policies proposed here or current policies? Conversation moving forward about policies within our district?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Do you need to take any action on these?
Nope, those will be acted upon next time.
Okay. All right, um, moving on, we do not need an, a executive session for negotiations, nor for personnel. However, um, in personnel, you all have been presented with the personnel report. Is there a motion to approve the report?
I'll make a motion. We approve the report as presented.
Second? All in favor, raise your right hand. And that passes 5-0. And we are down to announcements.
All right, a couple of things here at the end. First Friday will take place on second Friday this month, uh, which will be this Friday. Um, I think that it's still at Neosho County, but I know that they've, they have talked about some transition there. Uh, so I will find out for sure and send that information out to anybody that um, is looking forward to attending First Friday. City County USD is next Wednesday at the county, uh, which is just there at the annex. Uh, and then we start our instructional framework meetings, uh, this place tomorrow, uh, starting at, at 10 o'clock to 12, um, or 9 to 11, 9 to 11 tomorrow. And then uh, on Friday, we go from 1 to 3. Um, so again, these are the, the things, beginning the foundation of, of the work that we have within our district and a lot of great things going on. Uh, maybe the really sad part about all of this is that we already have July 17th listed as a date up there and, and the summer, the summer months have slipped away from us as we are just about three weeks away from people returning back to work and getting ready for the enrollment process for the 1920 school year, so.
It's no worse than Walmart having school supplies on the 4th of July.
They do have school supplies out. Get them before they're gone.
I didn't see the, uh, the school supply list, though. Have they issued school supply lists? Cause I didn't see those online.
Probably online.
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't know what we've done with school supply lists. Mr. Interest, have you done anything with school supply lists yet this year?
Nope, I have not.
Nope, there you go. We have, we have not released them yet.
Enrollment won't begin properly this week sometime, so it shouldn't.
Yeah. We will open up the online enrollment early, uh, cause there's really no reason for us not to. So we'll kind of start getting a better glimpse of what our numbers are and where they pan out and uh, where they fall. Um, and hopefully we, we have not the line of three hours of wait on August 1st as we start the enrollment process with, with others, with all of our schools.
Good deal.